All right, I would like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:00. We're right on the dock tonight, which is exciting. And I apparently have a new gavel, so that was kind of fun, my first time using that.
There you go. So you don't have to find the one that I was going to bring you.
That's all right. I'm nervous if the head might have been loose when I'm flying. Would you all join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I always like to begin our meetings reading the mission statement to get us thinking about why we're here. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. It's always the perfect segue into our Avon Achievers section. So I am going to invite Mr. Noam Stern to come forward. Is Susan Horvath?
Yes, she is.
Please come forward and introduce her to everyone, please.
Thank you.
So we can all enjoy her. And David Kavanaugh will be your board member to help.
Thank you very much. I'm so excited to introduce our newest partner here at RBS School, Susan Horvath, who's had a fantastic start to this school year. So welcome Susan. And it's a fantastic tradition. I'm honored, always honored that RBS gets kicked off typically. And as we were thinking as a school team about one of our beliefs and missions is that schools rest on the shoulders of so many different kinds of people. And I think many times that I've stood here, I've said exactly that, is that we rely on hundreds of different people to make the best experience possible for our students. So I'm very honored first to welcome our cafeteria staff. And two of our three staff could make it tonight. So Judy and Sharon, if you could come up and, well, to accept a third honor on behalf of Shelley that couldn't make it. But these are individuals who know literally every single one of our 542 students. And it's such a treat to be able to honor them tonight with their smiles and their passion and commitment. And while they aren't involved in curriculum and instruction necessarily, the work that they share and the knowledge that they have over our students is incredibly valuable. And so we're very lucky to have both of you guys. So Sharon, thank you so much. Judy, thank you so much. And I'll invite Kevin Pelletier also up. And Susan's going to say a few things about Kevin.
Yes, so Kevin, again, to piggyback off of what Noam was saying, again, not directly involved in that curriculum and instruction piece, but certainly an integral member of our school and a leader in our school. And really, as far as I know, went above and beyond over the summer to get RBS ready for the start of school. And I know that there's so many people that commented about how brave it looked at the start of school comparative to earlier. And just we're so appreciative of all of his efforts and leading that. In addition, just like our other staff members, greeting the students with a smile every single day, you know, as a member of our family. And we're just so lucky and privileged to be able to work with him. And happy to honor you in this way, Kevin.
Thank you.
Small gift for you. Let's see, this one's you, I think. One of you, one of you can't, one of you accept for the other person? Thank you. And certificates also. Oh, yes.
This is for you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Judy? Sharon? And we have the last one for Shelley. I think it'd be a surprise on her desk when she gets back from y'all.
So Judy, Sharon, and Kevin, I want to take a moment to thank you as well because I know how important your roles are in the schools, especially the little ones. If they forget their code, they can panic when it comes time to eat. They've been looking forward to that all day. And you make it so smooth and seamless for them. And Kevin's always been around as far as I can remember, my own children being in Roy and Brooke. And it's just always a smile, always engaged, and that matters. You're sending a community message that we all care about them. So thank you very much for being who you are and being a part of our family. So, and it's nice to have Maggie here, too. So thank you for celebrating with them. So again, one more round of applause. And we are keenly aware that many of you in the audience tonight are here to celebrate them and hadn't planned on enjoying the rest of what we have to offer you. So if you would like to excuse yourselves, we will not be offended. All right, so moving along, can I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes from August 20?
Move to approve them for August 20 and September 9.
All right, do I have a second for both?
September 9 is a typographical error.
Okay.
I think we went into executive session at 1:30 PM and not AM, if I recall.
I think that's accurate. I hope that's accurate.
Otherwise, they look great.
Yes, okay, excellent. So can I take then Jackie's second with the amendment to September 9?
Yes.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, passes unanimously. And now we are on to the communication from the public section. If anyone had come here this evening wanting to speak to the board, please come forward. Yes, just make sure everybody knows your names, please.
So here's Eric.
Yes, and if you speak loudly, Eric, is that enough? Or would you like him to be into the mic?
Oh, don't use that mic.
Don't use that mic.
I can speak loudly.
All right.
Hi, my name is Scott Tyler. Do you want me to give my address?
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm an Avon resident, proud parent of three, very happy with Avon schools. I'm here because we, I'm part of Fame, which is the booster club for our music and arts programs. We had our first meeting last night. So there, a group of us spent about 90 minutes talking about what's happening this year, some of the things we're excited about. We have one challenge that I wanted to bring to the table, and it is around the auditorium. And so we want to, we looked at it and said we have about 750 students, when you go seven to 12, that are involved in music programs. Some of them may overlap, so maybe it's not total 750, but roughly around 750. The auditorium's getting a lot of use. And so when we go in there for shows and concerts, we think there's opportunities to improve the space. Our reaction last night was it's probably going to be very expensive to do anything in the space. But our ask is simply if you would consider over the course of the year to see if we could look at what could be done. What are the options? Could we put a roadmap together where maybe it's not a large cost upfront, but something we could do over time? Start with audio, maybe some lights, and then think about the space. And the example I close with is for those of us who go to the new gym here, you know, the fact that you redid the floors when you walk in there, it feels like a really nice space. It made a huge difference. And we now have an awesome field. And we feel like it's a good time to think about our auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? All right. Oh, we do? Oh, please come up. If you could do the same, you can sit and tell us your name.
Hello, my name's Daniel Jobb. I'm an Avon resident as well. I'm with Fame as well, so I won't take up too much of your time. I have two kids that are in the high school that are both in the band program. And I just am here to ask the board to consider reinstating a middle school director. That's something that Mr. Culbertson has picked up. And a lot of parents are trying to help to fill in the gaps, which is great, but that's again, like a short-term fix. And having kids in band, being in band my whole life, I've been around Mr. Volpe and Mr. Culbertson. And I know Mr. Volpe started a bigger class than he's ever started, which means the numbers should be coming through the program. And it's time to consider that now, in my opinion, because we got to get, got to get the staffing in place to be able to take care of those kids. So Mr. Culbertson's done a great job, and he's stretched thin, as you guys may or may not know. And lots of performance opportunities, as he's trying to do. So I'd just like to simply ask the board to look around at other school districts. I believe a lot of the school districts around us have one band director per building. And it would be nice to be back at that level here at Avon High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jobb. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? All right, thank you very much for coming and representing Fame. Now we move to our student representatives. First, I want to welcome back Addison, but I want to say welcome to Alvin Glow. So he is our junior representative on the board now, and we're thrilled to have you and understand that this can feel a little daunting at first, but you'll get acclimated very quickly, I'm sure. And we do value both of your perspectives. So I want you to know that if we're speaking about something and you have a thought, please just alert me, raise your hand, and I'd be happy to call on you so that you can participate in that. But I'll allow you to take over the report section.
Okay. So I'd first like to say thank you all for welcoming me back. And also welcome to Alvin. I know him as he's a fellow class officer, and I hear that he does a great job doing that, so I'm excited to work with him this year. As far as school information goes, we've had a great start to the school year as far as like sports, clubs, and everything like that. I think that it's really gone smoothly, at least in the senior class. We have implemented some new safety precautions, as I'm sure you all know. I'm wearing the lanyard right now. And then we also have lockdown buttons that we just started this year. And I think that the students have really, like, just, everything has gone very smoothly, putting the lanyards, wearing them every day. And there hasn't been much complaint as far as wearing them, which I thought personally that there would be. So I think that everything that Principal Wright Woods is putting in is going really well. Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, first of all, thank you guys for welcoming me to the Board of Ed meeting. It is an honor to be here. And yeah, so junior year, year's been off to a great start as well. I don't really have much to say. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to our financial report with Ms. Shaw.
Your financial report for month ending August 31. I wanted to highlight the largest difference, and it has to do with the encumbrances between last fiscal year, this time, and this fiscal year. So right now, you can see the current, on your page, 7 for encumbrances is $41 million and change. And last year, this time, interestingly enough, it was 37.9 million. So we've had a 9.3% increase to that particular balance, which is wonderful. That speaks to the diligence of our schools in getting into the swing of things after three years of this system we've put in place. So we're in good shape.
Thank you. Were there any questions? All right, now on to committee reports, the curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
Forgive my glasses. I, they got crushed in the bottom of my bag, but I need to put them on, so I can read them. We had a very, we had a really positive, wonderful meeting. I thought it was really productive. Don't look at me if you want to really, really understand what I'm saying.
I thought it was contentious. That's why your glasses were there.
Not contentious. It was really productive and positive and a wonderful meeting. The core selections at AHS, we reviewed the 2018-19 level changes at the high school for the core areas. We looked at a number of students who leveled up, leveled down, dropped a course, and registered for a different course. We looked at students who received an override and a teacher recommendation, and some of them switched during the ad drop period at the beginning of the school year. One result of looking at the data was to take a closer look at the algebra track curriculum, which the administration at the high school and the middle school and the math department are working on. And they're going to continue to monitor the algebra track and the instruction to make sure that there are no additional changes that need to happen. Regarding the AP enrollment, the administration provided the three-year AP enrollment comparison. We discussed the 2017, 18, and 2018, 19 actual enrollments and tried to figure out how many we have actually this year, which I think will be hard. We'll probably have to wait a while to really get a sturdy number for that. There was an increase of 81 enrollments in AP classes from last year at this point right now. And that was, that was it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Jackie? All right, moving on to finance. Jay?
So our finance committee meeting, the main things we discussed were the budget transfers, which are in our package here, as well as the facilities use fund, the student activity accounts, which are all in line at each school as we'd expect at this time of year. And our next meeting is Tuesday, October 8th at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Negotiations, Jason?
Nothing to report right now. No negotiations are ongoing right now.
All right, thank you. Policy, Laura?
So at our last meeting, Mr. Wright Woods was trying to, to me, give us a very thorough summary of the use of mobile phones in the high school at this time, as we explored the possibility at some point of whether or not we might be looking at creating a policy around the use of cell phones in schools. There is not one at this time as a district. We will be revisiting that again in the spring to see how well the use of phone trees are going in the school. We are looking at a policy which is coming before you tonight, and that is the nondiscrimination policy, which is going to be coming before you tonight for a first review of new business. And the next meeting is Tuesday, October 3rd.
Any questions for Laura? All right, thank you. Liaison reports, board representative to Pre-Klume Professional Development Council, that would be me, and we have not had that yet this year. But orders are due, and we're coming up with October?
October 17.
October 17 is the next one. All right, thank you very much. Board of Finance, David?
Okay, I attended the August 26th meeting of the Board of Finance. The major issues were really simply the on-time completion of the turf field, which seems to be going well. There was also, the other issue they're watching at Board of Finance is whether or not we're going to be billed by the state for the contributions to the teachers' pension plan. It remains to be seen if that's going to happen. So at the moment, the answer is no, but that could change at any point. So that will require, they'll have to find some money if it comes down to that. And then they had a few questions regarding the capacity of the system because there are some housing developments underway that were going before the Board of Zoning. I know one of them has been voted down since that meeting has happened. And they were asking if we had sufficient capacity in the system. And I don't know exactly how many students we would expect to see, but I told them for the time being that we weren't talking about building any new buildings and that we had some slack capacity in the system to absorb somewhat of an increase. Because none of these developments were supposed to be huge, and not all of them were going to be attractive to families anyway. So we'll see where that goes. So that was everything that they discussed. Next meeting will be September 23.
Thank you, David. Any questions? All right, our representative to town council, Jason?
Yep, I was at the meeting on September 5th. The council had nice things to say about convocation. Appreciated being invited there. I know some of the numbers, I think at least three of them were there with us, so they appreciated that. There was a kind of a quick discussion on cybersecurity issues. I know there was a recent county committee that had some issues with that. So the council was just interested in maybe at some point getting just a brief update on, you know, the status of our cybersecurity. So that was discussed a little bit. But our technology lease that we had voted on in our last meeting for the phone books was approved. Heather was there and did a really nice job just giving the council the information they needed to get that approved. So thank you, Heather, for doing that. And then they also approved a new benefits consultant to replace Milliman, which I forget the name of the new consultant.
Lockton.
Lockton, okay. I guess Milliman is out of the municipality business, is the way I understood it. So that was a town council meeting. You want some update on turf field?
I was going to ask if you want, you can, do you want to do some now? We are discussing later.
Yeah, briefly, I'll give you the kind of rundown of the meeting on September 11th. Most of it was old discussion of things we've discussed before, security, cameras, storage. The only thing we voted on was a real glamorous issue of garbage cans. We approved six garbage cans and two recycling cans to be purchased and put out on the field. And then that's, that's really it. Otherwise, I think we're going to, like you said, have some discussion about the kind of use of the field now that it's on the brink of being essentially done. So that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Jason? All right, board rep to Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
I will be attending tomorrow is their first of the year official meeting, and I'll be able to attend that one.
Excellent, thank you very much. So next is the board chair update. I just had a couple reminders. I figured I'd take this opportunity. I wanted to thank everybody who's participated in our open houses so far. Four out of the five buildings have been completed, and it's been nice, I think, for us to greet families as they arrive. This week is the middle school. Tomorrow night is seventh grade night from 6:30 to 8:00, and Thursday's eighth grade night from 6:30 to 8:00. I will be able to attend the eighth grade one, but I'll be a mom as well. So another thing is we have our student, the summer internship poster presentation on Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30. So I intend to be here for that. They had so many students, they had to extend the amount of time and change it to another evening to accommodate sports schedules and such. So can I just have a show of hands, so I have a sense of how many of us would be able to be there on Thursday night? Does anybody know for sure?
Is Thursday night also the open house at the middle school?
From 5:00 to 6:30 here, and middle school's 6:30 to 8:00. So you can back, which I have to do, so.
I can, I can probably do that.
Come for a bit and then, okay.
I may be able to.
To the poster presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I think that would be nice. They do enjoy doing that for us as well as having parents there. So if you're able to come, remember it's from 5:00 to 6:30 in the gallery space. That was it for my update, so I'll move over to the superintendent report.
Thank you. Hiring report on page 14. See the completion of many of our outstanding positions that we have hired for through September. We are beginning the first round interviews for the assistant principal at Avon Middle School next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's my, it's my schedule you're looking for, next week. Tomorrow, we're beginning the first round, and hoping the second round will be next week and possibly the week after. We have some, a couple of positions of paraprofessionals, for example, that are currently put in as substitute paraprofessional positions for some changing needs with students. We'll be looking at the possibility of permanency for some of those positions as we keep reevaluating students with needs. So you may see some more hires here to make sure that we are providing proper services to our students. Our enrollment report, see on page 15, we are holding steady right now. We haven't seen any more of a rush of registrations like I was reporting at the last couple of meetings over the summer. I think we've settled down for the time being. I saw a couple registrations today, actually. This is also when we still see some fluctuations. I've also seen some families moving from closing on homes and so on, so we'll see where we are next month. Under the strategic plan, as I spoke to the board last month about, we have a draft that we have been working on as an administrative team that now, at the beginning of the school year, following convocation, we saw pieces of that there so that we could work with our faculty and staff on that. Our principals did that out in the buildings on the first few days, and we have pushed that back and forth between the buildings and central office at this point. We had a discussion about it again yesterday. And what we will be looking for now is dates that we are all available to sit down and bring the draft to the board, more than what you've already seen, so that we can have a conversation around our goals and how they fit into what we've been discussing. We've made some slight changes from what we discussed last year, particularly in the areas of teaching and learning goals, just in tightening up what we're focusing on. And we're also hoping that this is a more along the lines of a three-year plan so that we have a longer guiding vision for the district. So as I mentioned previously, Shirley will be sending out some possibilities in a doodle for a board retreat for us to have a conversation on the strategic plan. Anything for, I think you have a question?
No.
Okay, it's fine. If I, if the board agrees, I would like to call up Mr. Altimus to the, to the table or to the front. He's, he stayed with us tonight so that if we had more specific questions about the water main repair at Pine Grove School, he would be able to speak more directly to some pieces, obviously, than I, I've been involved in the broad version of this. So I will stop there, and I will fill in the gaps after. Miles, if you'd like to explain where we are with what needs to be done at Pine Grove.
Pine Grove's basically sprung a leak about a week and a half ago. We noticed that it was coming up from the ground. There's a number of little manhole covers, you probably see them throughout town and everything like that. Water's coming out from one of them. It's in the back parking lot as it transitions into the playground on the north side of the building. What has to be, what they think it is with somewhat high confidence, is a blow-off tube that connects to the main, the water main, that's leaking. They've seen these things fail before, them being the water company and the, our contractor, Urban Sanitation. What they have to do is dig down about four or five feet through the asphalt and the ground, set up a structure so they can work safely in there, replace it, and put it all back in. They do that, they have to turn off the water. So we've got that, we have that scheduled for September 30th, which is a school holiday. They feel they can get it done within about four hours, be in and out of there, without too many complications if it's, so, but like I said, they're high confidence that if they feel that anything else they run into, they can repair while we're down there pretty quickly. They have supply houses on call that they go to. They're going to have a runner ready to go get the part if they need it. They're working with the water company now to identify the size of the pipes and everything like that so they can have as much on hand as possible.
Right. From a cost perspective, Miles, what we?
Cost perspective is somewhere around the $7,000 to $10,000 range. They gave us a preliminary estimate that they include materials around $3,500, but it's, they also don't, the material's going to be another couple thousand, and they, it's also contingent on how much asphalt they actually have to dig up. There's a fence that has to be taken out and then put back in and things like that. So we're estimating no more than $10,000, probably closer to $7,000.
Are there any questions for Miles?
I have one.
Okay, Jason?
I'm not a utilities expert, Miles, so is it because the pipe is on our property that it's a, our cost, our property versus the water company?
Yes.
That's the reason, because it's on our property? And when they get down there, will they be able to identify for certain that that's the problem? What they speculated is, and I want, once they dig in there, they'll know?
Yes, because it's, it's still, it's still leaking. So once they dig down, they'll identify where the leak is. There's a transition of a stainless steel pipe and a net split typically fails after. It was put in in 1999, right before the building was built, so.
Twenty years.
If I might add in, my hope, and Miles also, had been that Friday afternoon, once school closed at Pine Grove, we would close the campus and they would come out and begin to work because, to your point, Mr. Nivenico, they don't really know what they're looking at until they're, until they dig it up. So they're, they have a good idea about what the issue is because they've seen it before, and the symptoms point to that. But as we all know, once you go under the hood, you might find something else. The problem with doing it that way, and we have this conversation again today, went back and forth with contractor, is that it's so much digging that has to be done, we'll then have some giant holes that if water collects in them, we'll have a different problem. So if it happens to rain, if anything happens while we have these giant holes waiting for them to actually do the work, which won't be until they know they can get the parts, we have a different issue. So they did not want to begin digging until they knew they could be on site to respond to whatever could happen, supply houses open and so on. So that's why it's now early Monday morning. Frankly, that makes us nervous because now we have one day to ensure that all of this is done so that we can go back to opening on Tuesday morning. But it's the only way for it to be done right now, and it can't wait for a longer break.
And we do have one call in case it does get worse. We're prepared to come in, but we don't anticipate that.
Do you need a motion for us regarding that?
No. It's an, it's an emergency repair, and we've moved forward already. But we want you to be aware, obviously, because it's a, it's a big repair. We did enact the bid. But we want you to be aware, obviously, because it's a, it's a big repair. We did enact the bid, what our policy allows, the bid waiver because of the emergency, type of emergency that it is, and we weren't out doing an RFP process that could have taken us at least a month. We have worked with this contractor previously and been satisfied with the work and Miles has been communicating with the Department of Public Works and I, I've spoken to Mr. Robertson about it, town manager, so we're all on the same page that this was the best way to move forward to make sure this was taken care of sooner than later.
Any questions?
May as well stay here, Miles, because then we're gonna get, then we're gonna get into the fundraiser bricks, right? So first, I also just would like to say, this is the first meeting that we have had since school actually opened because it seems like it was quite a while ago, but it was really only a few weeks ago. So first, I just wanna say thank you to all of our faculty and staff in the schools because we really did have a very smooth opening on our end. We had some busing concerns like we have every year. I think we may have had a few more this year than we've had in the past with some of the way the routes were done and so on. There were some changes at specialty and staffing and so forth that gave us some issues, beginning with folks getting into the groove of routing the buses on their end. But they have been very responsive and feel like we're, we're in a good place now. Of course, we're still dealing with some bus stop issues here and there, but the trains are running on time, so to speak, at this point. Regardless of that, I, we had a very good opening. Everyone was humming and buzzing along and happy from the first day, knock on wood. So I just wanted to express my thanks because that doesn't happen through the efforts of any one person. It really takes everybody that works out here in the schools. And I will say this, Miles, while you're here, there were a number of compliments. I think you know, but I'd like to acknowledge you and the facilities and maintenance crew because our, our properties really looked spectacular as we opened schools. Sharon, I see Mr. Stern nodding his head behind you. We heard a lot of that. So I've already extended my thanks to them privately, so to speak, but wanted to do so publicly also. Thank you for all that you did. And I think that having the extra summer help that we put into the budget and were able to, the life on the share was, was very helpful. Want to speak to that, Miles, but?
No, it was. It's how we, we caught on with a lot of the fur outdoor maintenance and we're able to do more on the inside as well by bringing up some time on our radar maintenance. Yes, it was extremely helpful.
That brings me from a silly standpoint. As you know, the Lights On Avon project has been fundraising for lights for our turf field. And the main fundraiser at this point are bricks that they're selling with names or other inscriptions for donors. The original plan, from how I understand it, from talking with Ms. Tana Davy, was to put the bricks in an area down near the field. It was determined as the project was going that that may not be the best placement for them for a couple of reasons, but I believe the main reason being that they wanted it to be showcased a, a little bit more so that when you're coming into the field, you can actually see the bricks. They'll, they'll make an A. So Susan spoke to me. I know she's spoken quite a bit with Mark Zaccio from the town side and also Brandon. And Miles and I then, then got involved to assist with the spot that they would like to put the bricks in. And the spot is in the island, in, in the area we call the eyelash, correct, Miles? We can't say how big the, the A of bricks will be right now because it's dependent partially upon how many bricks they sell. That said, if I remember correctly, Miles, the square footage that they have to work with is about eight hundred and fifty square feet. And so Susan went out to look at the space, Miles assisted her, I've spoken with Brandon, and the short of it is, it's outside of the public building project, clearly, because it's a, it's a fundraiser and a donation process. However, it is making a change to the property that, that will be permanent and will also then need to be maintained appropriately, number one. And number two, we needed to make sure it wasn't gonna be in an area that would cause us issues with plowing or, or the like. So Miles got involved to make sure all of that was the case and we see no issues with where the placement of it will be. But we wanted to have a discussion here because we want you all to be aware and if there's any questions or concerns or other ideas to, to let us know because what the town manager has asked me for is simply to know that we've had the conversation. It's clear where these are going and then they can go through the approval process on the town side, which has, as it has been explained to me, is where the final approval rests with this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, if you know, or Miles, but my understanding is from speaking to all parties, that the bricks were donated as part of the project and also the, the labor to put them in? None of that is for us to?
Yeah, when I talked to her about it, I didn't, you know, she had, I think she had a mason she wanted to use. I wasn't sure. She didn't say whether it would cost anything or not, but we talked a little bit about contractors. We have rules for contractors and she just had to make sure that's all coordinated.
Okay.
But she didn't say?
But it's not a cost to us?
No, it'll be part of the package when they say here it is. We just have to provide the place for it.
The space.
So Miles, my only concern is that before they move forward, if they're using outside workers, that they're in communication with you so that future maintenance is the way that you want it, you know, designed. So, you know, for our code to do in the future, once they're done, make sure it's a design that you want.
Yeah, so that, that the discussion I had with her was that since it was going on our property, we had to say over, we put it in and all the houls and things like, it had to be coordinated with us. We had the approval for it.
I, I don't really understand where, is it going into the parking lot pavement?
Do you wanna explain it better?
It's going into the island itself where it runs grass.
Oh, the island between the upper and the lower? Or the mini-upper and the mini-lower?
Yes, yes, over by the gym entrance, yes.
Okay, not on the, our sidewalk, in the grass between the two?
Correct.
No, okay.
If you see in the daytime, there's a tree there. Just go to the side of the tree, power for it to avoid the roots.
In, in the grassy area, not in the concrete, okay.
Love the idea. I think it's gonna look great. My concern is process. It sort of seems like they've decided to do this and then brought us in after the fact. And my concern going forward is that we're gonna be responsible for the maintenance. We've already raised a concern about the labor they choose to install it. I just sort of feel like they're dictating what we do on our property without coming, talking to us first. And I just, as a board, I'm concerned about, I wanna make sure our people have the say on what's gonna become our responsibility to care for. I just don't wanna end up with something after the fact that's gonna cause more problems for you and, and for your staff. I just, I feel like they're skipping through the process. Cause my impression is that they didn't fully go through the building committee on this originally as well, but I wasn't part of that meeting.
I could speak to the building committee part of it. It came up at a committee meeting and the long and short of it is like the superintendent said, really because it's a fundraising effort, it falls outside of the scope of the field project. So we didn't even as a committee vote on whether or not it should be approved. I did get the impression from Mark Zaccio, they had a lot of conversations with Susan, that he was supporting the effort to get this done. He was trying to help her with it, but being approved by the committee, it wasn't, it was discussed but never even voted on because we felt it was outside the scope of the project. So that's what the committee wrote.
And so Mark then at some point redirected, redirected the efforts and had Susan get in touch with me so that exactly what we're speaking about right now would happen to make sure that we were a part of the process from the facility standpoint because we do have to make sure that?
As long as we stay in control of that part of the process. Like I said, I think it's gonna look fantastic. I think it's a great idea. I just, just wanna make sure we are in control.
Understood.
Thank you.
I did have just one other question. Do we know, is the plan to put the bricks in and then as the donations come in, to start etching people's names in or just to hold off until all the donations are in and then build that? I don't know the answer, I'm just curious.
My impression is you're holding off until they get all the bricks, they'll engrave them and then they'll be a dead, it's not gonna be ever growing area. Once they enter the fundraiser, that's it. That's the number of bricks there are. And I said, my impression was that once they get some of them all and give them a grave, then they're gonna.
Is there a chance, sorry for jumping in. So in the discussion, they visited us last time. There was the goal of raising the total amount of money, a hundred thousand dollars from the town plus the additional three hundred thousand dollars that were gonna raise. There was some question, why not they'll be able to raise it? If they are unable to meet their goal to install the lights, will that terminate the project of the stones with the As or can we still get that as a, a benefit of this project going forward?
I assume you don't know the answer to that and I, I would have to speak to Susan, I think, for that answer, Jeff. I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
So is, is the light committee working hand in hand with the building committee? Is there a relationship there?
I mean, there's a, I would say there's a talking relationship between Mark, who is the chair, and Susan, who's heading up the fundraising project. But I think from the committee perspective, the lights are not part of the approved project and there's really nothing, frankly, to discuss on the part of the committee.
Who, I'm sorry for asking again. So just for clarification of the hierarchy, who should the light organization be working with? With you, Bridgette, or with the building committee, or with the town?
I don't see any way forward without it being all of us, to be perfectly honest with you. And right now, that is the way that it has been. Some of it is Brandon and I just speaking directly after individual meetings. Mark Zaccio has been great about contacting me is necessary too. Susan is bringing me when she knows I need to know something. So right now, we have an open line of communication on the project.
I don't know the exact date, but the building committee, I think, will cease to exist probably sometime in like November, I would guess.
Yes, there, Brandon and I actually just spoke about that last night. There, there will, when we come to the point of true substantial completion, there will be a time when the committee is, their, their final act, I believe, will be to turn over the field entirely to the Board of Ed. And that's where some of the other questions came in, but that's for a different part of the agenda. So I'll stop there. Again, might as well stay there, Miles. So we had some maintenance questions and so on.
Just a comment to Jeffrey, that the Board of Ed is responsible for accepting any donations to it. So we don't accept that it shouldn't happen.
And so right now, we're not at the point of actually accepting a donation.
Right. Now we're all aware of this and so I think that can more confidently allow the town council to move, knowing that we're on board with this. Okay, are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve?
So?
Mr. Most, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, passes unanimously. Now, old business, let's talk about that turf field update.
Where would you like to start, Jason? And I say that only because you, you started on the piece related to what the last meeting was, but I know you had other information that you didn't necessarily?
No, I guess I wanted to have a, I thought it was time to have a conversation at our meeting, but because like you said, we are nearing the substantial completion date where the field is officially turned over to the Board of Education and there are some responsibilities that come with it. There were, there were things that came up both at the town council meeting and the committee meeting. But I just wanna make sure, and I'm sure the administration has a handle on all this stuff, but I don't think we've ever had the conversation out loud as a group about much of it. So that's why I asked to talk about this tonight. So just to give you kind of, you know what the rundown is, I think, but just the security cameras and to make sure we're close to having that issue finalized. An issue that we talked about at the committee meeting the other night that, I don't wanna say it was new to me, but I hadn't really thought in depth about was just really storing all the equipment that is coming. This new field, there's new soccer goals, there's new lacrosse goals, there's new netting to protect the track between the baseball field. There's netting to protect, I believe it's the parking lot or the track from lacrosse balls. So the thought is, at least from my point of view, and we talked about this a little bit at the meeting, that, you know, it's in our, it's in everybody's best interest if we can store most, if not all of this stuff somewhere protected in the winter months to extend the life of it. There was also a discussion about the fact that in the winter, for instance, you need to make sure the soccer goals come off the field because they can result in stains on the turf. Just things like that, that I wanna make sure we're aware of, we're prepared for. At the town council meeting, there was some talk about field maintenance and, you know, I know from past experience with our old regular turf field, there were some issues that would come up and I, I sat through town council meetings where people would sometimes throw their hands up and say, you gotta go talk to the Board of Ed. With a new field like this, I don't wanna really see us get into that situation. I'd like to see as, if possible, you know, with this investment that the town made and we made, to work as a team to make sure we maintain that field and our investment as well as we can. I'm confident we're working with Brandon to do that, but again, I wanted to just talk about it. So those are really the, the biggest issues that I wanted to just, just talk about. The kind of, the management of the field once it's really turned over.
I do supplement that. There will be a grooming machine that takes care of this, that goes around this motorized. So that needs to be put somewhere.
There's a shed for it.
I assume there probably is. But the biggest thing is going to be, the average life of these things is ten years. So we should roughly figure out what the replacement cost is going to be, presumably it's the same number plus a little bit for inflation. And you set that aside every year so that all of a sudden in year ten, you don't go, oh my God, five million dollars. So that's something that we need to make sure is covered so we aren't surprised. Agreed?
Go ahead, Jeff.
My other general question is, I saw something on social media, so you always be careful there, but it looks like there's certain rules, regulations in terms of walking on the field and on the track. And I have some larger concerns regarding how we get that information out to the public, if the track is gonna be open to the public. I mean, it's things from like no high heels. They were very specific on the type of cleats that can be worn and so forth. And my concern is without providing that information, there's gonna be damage done, not by ourselves, but for the public, that's gonna incur added costs for us.
No flavor Gatorade, it said.
Yeah, no flavor Gatorade that too.
I was gonna wear my high heels, but never mind.
So, all right, let's, let's roll back now that we know where the concerns are. Miles, if you could just take a minute to update all of us on where the field is as we sit here because we are nearing completion, but we are, the work is a little bit slower at this point because of the juncture we're at for the final touches, so to speak.
This morning, we had the update. It's really just, I will say little things because it's a comparison. They are, they are getting ready to move over and start preparing for the net, the netting for the fly balls on the side there. The shed comes in, I wanna say the twenty-fourth, the machine comes in right after that, because they're, the machine is in the state. They're holding it until we get the shed. The shed will go in, the shed will be for the machine. We have some extra infill that will be stored in there and some of the new athletic equipment will also go in. Then Tim's filing society, what goes in, anybody wants to haul back and forth. So that'll all go in the shed for storage. They're finishing up the grass areas. Today, they were out there, I think, laying the foundation for the, they're putting in a porta potty with a, a shelter around it so it's shielded from the street. And now they got there by the shed and the, I mean, the shed and the, the snap shack. So they're getting all that area final, final prepped. So they're on the last couple weeks of really getting some things done. The landscaping goes, they're expecting to put that in the end of September. Getting that in mind.
Painting some bleachers. Right now, we are, are in.
We are, we're doing maintenance on the bleachers, that's on us. They started it yesterday, it'll be there all week. The two, basically completely redoing the two bleachers right off the center and then doing some touch painting on the end bleachers. So if you ever, if you see it in the daytime, it's still ready a hundred percent better just with the primer. So that's where we are on. So that's where we are on the status of the field.
Want to speak to the storage?
Storage. Again, Tim Philon has a plan, talked to him about it. He believes he's about 90% on the solution on that. The remaining 10% is going to depend on the storage shed and how things fit in there. He's cleaned out a lot of the old equipment that he no longer needs because we've got the new things in, so that's cleared up some space. He's going through his storage areas in the back there, rearranging, reassigning through the teams. So he feels he has a good handle on where to put everything. The actual goals for lacrosse and soccer will stay out, stored outside. The nets will come off, they'll be moved off the field. And that's what seems to be the standard practice in some other districts that Tim's talked to. And they are well-treated, they shouldn't cause, they shouldn't, they shouldn't impact them at all. So storage, we feel pretty confident about with what we have and what we're getting. This shed, I think I wrote it down, is 28 by 12. So it's a fair-sized shed.
Is this a new shed with, this is a new additional shed?
Correct, brand new. Yeah, it's a part of it there. That's the storage.
Maintenance?
Maintenance. We're getting the, as soon as the maintenance equipment comes in, which is basically a gator with a rake and some other little attachments on it to do it, there'll be training conducted for both my staff and Brandon and his task, or will be tasking Department of Works to provide somebody to be trained on it also. And I believe Tim has identified one of his coaches who actually worked for me over the summer to also be trained on the machine in case there's any last minute things. The recommendation is that we have one or two at the most dedicated people to it because they get a feel for it. There's a lot of things that go into it. The rake has a magnet on it so you don't grind in metal into the new turf field. There's a lot of little things that are technique to become instinct. So we'll have one person really dedicated to it, another one as a backup. My entire staff will be trained on it just in case, but they probably will never really get on the field and do it. And I would, I would be kind of surprised if the Department of Works person ever does it, but they will be there in case they have to get on at some point. They'll be trained on the machinery.
So, question, not sure you know the answer tonight, but most exciting about using the field, and whether Tim Philon can update us or you or somebody, how the field is scheduled for use within our school teams because there are multiple sports that want to use the field, especially in conditions when other fields may not be usable because of weather and clothes. So, you know, who gets priority and how the field is divided, just let us understand how that works. But then also for the youth sports and others within the community, who schedules that or how is that possible since it's, you know, on the school grounds? I know it's different from park and rec because it's on the school grounds. How is that going to be scheduled going forward?
I know Tim's got the schedule. He's already, I mean, they've started playing games on it. I couldn't tell you what it is, but I know he went with all his coaches.
The park and rec side, do you want to speak to that because that's not changing from current?
The rec side, no, the rec side's pretty much what they've done in the past. They schedule it through us, through the high school. It starts after, there's a certain time that they get access to it, that's after Tim's done with it. It's around maybe five o'clock every day, I can't say off the top of my head. But they'll, rec will put in their requests, just like in the past. It's just another, in that aspect, it's just another one of our fields that will be more popular. But it gets scheduled the same way as all our other fields will be.
Right, in my opinion there, as I've asked in the past, is someday we could have posted on a website when the fields are being used by such and such organizations or teams. So if others in the community want to use the field when it's just open, to have access to certain places.
We can work with.
Yeah, we have a calendar.
Calendar.
We did that.
Online, okay.
We have a calendar that covers all our, all our schedules.
Okay.
But to make it more obvious and accessible, I guess, Susan.
Laura has a question.
So going back to the point about inventory, I know in the past, maintaining and keeping track of sometimes very expensive equipment has not been easy. But there was some talk a while back, I know the Booster Club had a proposal into some type of barcoded system where each piece of equipment has a barcoded label and it would get scanned similarly to the way you scan something in the supermarket. I'm pretty sure other districts are using that so that there's a way of electronically and easily keeping track of equipment that's going out and coming back so that we're not constantly having to either rely on the Booster Club to replace lost or damaged equipment or on the public to do the same. Is there any way that we can look into what that might involve versus the way it's done now, which I'm assuming is still by hand?
Heather, speak to that.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass the thought.
Just making sure.
We do have that system. Equipment here in the district does have Avon Public Schools barcodes, as does the IT equipment, separate barcoding system, but same idea. So anytime large equipment that meets the threshold comes in, it is coded and it's also put on our insurance schedule so that it's covered with liability umbrella.
And what's the threshold?
So do the use 5,000 or more. But we do also maintain clearly every piece of equipment that comes in, including filing cabinets.
All right. Good job.
I think I want to comment too about the replacement clause. I know the town is setting aside some, we'll have to follow to see if our equipment's part of that as well. They are setting some, because the carpet gets replaced every few years.
It's going to be ten, I'm sorry.
Ten, and they are, my understanding is that that is part of their long-term capital plan is to put that money aside for the replacement of the carpet.
Back to the, so I think there's a good question about what can and cannot be done on the field. Reminded me also to say, as a perfect example, one of the, you know, there's some unintended consequences that impact what we might have been used to in using the field, right, by putting in the turf field. One of them is certainly what can and cannot go on the field. We already had this conversation in regards to graduation, for example. We can't set up metal chairs and risers and those sorts of things on the field because that would damage, potentially damage the field and or void the warranty. Similarly, we've had some questions regarding the use of the portable lights on the field as we have done in the past. So for example, you know, we've had a longstanding practice of having senior night, for example, for teams out on the field here when we were, when we're able to. There are sometimes they've been other places, but here, we have done it when we're able to on the home field, of course. And this year and moving forward, we are unable to do that with the portable lights because they're another example of something that cannot be put on the field because there's the potential of damaging the field and voiding the warranty. So that has meant here at the high school that Mr. Rankowitz has been working, I believe you already had a meeting, I think you actually met with student government and maybe some of the class officers, to discuss some other ways to recognize each one of the teams besides it being, you know, the playing under the lights. Sounds like I'm giving a plug for lights on Avon donations. It wasn't the intent, just putting it out there as, as a, let it be known that we really cannot bring the lights out onto that field now that it's made of turf. Similarly, I chuckled when someone mentioned about the high heels because it reminded me that I had gotten used to in working in previous districts that had a turf field, it being automatic that when I walked out to the field, I took my high heels off if I had been coming from work. And last year I was at a lacrosse game and one of the kids finally said to me, why do you always walk around barefoot on the field? And it dawned on me that I didn't have to do that anymore, but it was ingrained. But that said, one of the ways to get the message out to the public is by signage. And that is most likely what we are going to have to look at, you know, there's the please, no. Go ahead, Miles.
There is some signage that comes with the field, it should be there next week. I'm not exactly sure what's along because I've seen the more exhausted list that you're referring to. So.
That was the first time I had seen some of those things, such as a flavored Gatorade.
That's what I'm saying too, so I'm not sure what's included in the signage, but we can organize, but there is, they sign, a package of signs that has been ordered by the contractor.
Is that list accurate that's floating around on social media?
Uh, we do.
I'm not sure, Jeff, now that I've heard.
Right, because the flavored Gatorade is one that I questioned.
I've seen that before, though. When Farmington put theirs in, they don't want to stain the white lines.
True, but why don't, I think what would be who bosses to get the official list, so to speak. We'll distribute it here and put it elsewhere where it can be seen.
And it should be obviously shared with coach staff as well. Because it's our students who are going to be using, I think, the field the most and we're going to rely upon the coaching staff to enforce those policy symbols.
Did we answer all the questions, Jason? Probably the cameras. There was some conversation about the cameras, right?
Yeah, my understanding is as we're moving along, I think we maybe selected the cameras we're going to use. I just, I want to make sure that that is on track to be completed because, just in the same thing, the field is almost done and is almost being turned over. I feel pretty strong, I think we probably all would, that we should be prepared to monitor it when that happens. So I want to make sure we're on track to that.
Miles, and I spoke about this actually even just today, but I'll defer you, Miles, to explain the camera situation.
We've identified a camera, got the spec sheet out yesterday, ordered to, Demar Zachio, he sent it out to the building committee, talked to one of the representatives on the committee who is a security director at Culp, who was very concerned about our cameras. He's satisfied with the cameras that we're looking at. You may or may not know that the building committee set aside $20,000 towards that project. I will get the quote in, expect the quote in tomorrow, haven't quite laid out where they're going. They have to go where it's power existing already. So that will dictate how many cameras we need and then the $20,000 will dictate how many we can buy. But we're, we're pretty confident we can cover the field in some way, shape or form with these cameras. And they're supposed to be good out to about 150 meters, the great detail, night sights. And they, they're the same manufacturer as the cameras that we installed last summer. So they'll mill right into our system. It'll be on a Wi-Fi network. The receiver will be on our, will be up here someplace on top of the building and it'll just go right into our network like all our other cameras do.
Two bar won't work.
It has about a two mile radius, he said, on the Wi-Fi transmitter.
A standard Wi-Fi, then?
No, it's a, that's what the, and I'm discussing with the contractor.
I would be careful about that, make sure we get that promise right.
I've also been in discussions with our IT department on that as well, so I think. We'll see when he sends the specs on everything into us and the, and the quote will specify exactly what he's using because it's a bridge, it's a Wi-Fi bridge, it's on the camera itself, it's Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi cameras themselves don't do that.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Thank you for bringing this all to our attention. I think it's good that we're knowledgeable of all the different facets. It is very exciting to see the progress that's been made and I am happy that we're painting the bleachers. It does make a big difference. So are we free to release Miles at this point?
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're moving on to new business. Policy for 118.11 nondiscrimination personnel, did you want to speak to that, Laura?
This is up for a first read and Mr. Medic has come several times to our meetings to give excellent presentations and gave us input that he's had from our attorney and also obviously from administration. One of the big things is that we're separating out and making separate policies for students and for staff. So I'm not sure if he's had a chance to look at this on page 44, we'll see. Also making sure the forms are more consistent and perhaps Mr. Medic or the superintendent would like to speak further to us since they are the ones that do so much of the research and gave us the proper presentations.
Certainly, thank you. As Ms. Young said, we did, we'll need policies to clearly focus on how nondiscrimination impacts employment and employees and also access educational program for students. Those are the two key concepts within these policies. So access to educational programming for students and then also ensuring a safe work environment for our employees. We've tried to streamline the forms and also the process used for complaints to mirror that of what we did with our sexual harassment policies at their revision as well to provide consistency and ease of use for staff as well as students and/or parent guardians.
I would just note for the superintendent and board chair that it would be helpful in the future if it's that first read or second read because you don't know. So if people don't know whether or not they're going to want to approve something or if we're just merely discussing it as a first read.
Thoroughly noted, thank you. So the second one, shall we speak to that separately or it's basically, it's just delineating out students from personnel?
It's just a delineation. First, superintendent and Ms. Young would like to add anything more, but it really tries to streamline these to focus on the key concepts, which for the student pieces, access to educational programming and again, ensuring that the procedure for reporting complaint mirrors that of sexual harassment for ease of use and for our regulations to follow the statutory procedures.
Laura, anything?
If anybody has any questions, have a good time downs.
Jessica?
So I guess my standard question is, how much of this verbiage in the policy is dictated by our attorneys and is standard policy? And how much, and if so, what, has been avanized, if you will?
Vast majority of the policy and regulation comes from the recommendation of Board Council with the recent updates to federal and state statutes in regards to what we discussed at the policy committee. We discussed in great detail both philosophically as well as the meaning of the key statement where it begins on the first paragraph. If they look at either policy, where it delineates and lists out the areas and basis for discrimination, we wanted to ensure that it both was broad and specific and that the words worked with one another and didn't impact the overall meaning of the policy. So after some discussion, we looked at, for example, adding the word ancestry because as we discussed, ancestry sometimes may be different than national origin as well as religion and ethnicity. We had very good discussion at the policy committee when we brought that to our Board Council. They also recommended that we could add it and wouldn't change interpretation of meaning of law or policies. So again, we tried to fall in line with say federal statute, but we do try to add some level of localized meaning here. And that was really the biggest piece that we added to this. The rest is pretty common from our Board Council's recommendation.
I would say, Mr. Fleischman, it's much like the sexual harassment policy that we discussed in previously past because there have been so many changes, both to legislation and guidance as a result of suits, of office civil rights, guidance and so forth, that we stuck very closely to the model policies that our Board Council provides us to make sure that we were covered under the umbrella of the law.
That being said, there was considerable analysis and discussion around the materials that were provided to us by Mr. Medic. There was certainly a great deal of guidance from both statutory level and our attorneys. In this case, I would not say that it was avanized, perhaps, as some of our other policies might have been, but rather a great deal of detail was given to the student policy versus the staff policy in terms of what should be consistent, but what needs to be very specifically for one group than for another. And there's a lot of work on it.
I'm going to have to comment in addition to that. One of the arguments I had was a discussion about genetic information for students because that's normally done for staff. And so we had come up with a genetic disease that does not manifest itself as a disability when you're at school age, which we actually found one. So in fact, we made that change. That would give you an example of the level of analysis we went through. And I wouldn't say it was avanizing, but we like to think that when we get done, it's a better policy than our council originally recommended to us. And then at the end, Roberta goes back and double checks it with him and says, did we make it crazy? And at the risk of putting words in your mouth, I think the analysis was, yeah, it was good edits, thanks.
Good edits, not crazy.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I wanted to hear.
And my apologies for not making it. And my apologies for not making it clear on whether it was a first or second read, Houston. But there have been times where the board has been asked to move something up faster, in which case we have time to do a second read.
That was missed, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so now if you turn to page 91 and 92, you'll see the Board of Education operating budget development timeline. We do need to move on this this evening. So if everyone has had a chance to look it over, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Board of Education operating budget development timeline as presented or with adjustments as noted.
Second. I'm second, I'm sorry.
David. All in favor?
I assume we have presented right, because we didn't adjust it.
Correct.
Correct.
That's where we're going.
Lots and lots of meetings.
Any extensions, any?
I guess I voted I, just to know.
Okay.
Got it.
It was so quick, I missed it.
Okay. All right, so now communication from board members.
I have a couple that just sort of, beginning of the school year observations I wanted to bring up and maybe assess a little bit. The first was a personal observation. I was on Power School filling out the documents for my own kids. I noticed there was a citizenship question that I don't recall in the past. And I was curious, the purpose of the question and why I was asking it.
To the chair, if I may, because I know we're a different part. Thank you for bringing that up, because we had discussed this. And I actually wanted to mention it in part of my update. The question that is a part of the demographic collection that the state requires, that is the one that you're referring to. We are required by the state of Connecticut and in turn the federal government to provide certain pieces of data, in part for our funding, for state and federal funds. To have that piece of information, the state collects in some form from school districts as part of the PSIS reporting. To be clear, it doesn't mean that it's a condition of registration in our schools. It cannot be legally. But because the question was asked, and I know that this has been a topic, and we've seen it on the news, we've heard of some other places where they had also been questioned. And I know that Senator Murphy has, for example, been leading a charge to look into the possibility of whether or not school districts were, are accurately obtaining this information or legally obtaining this information. So with that in mind, to double check the way that our process worked, I reached out to the board council. They told me that, she told me that they've had the same question, obviously, from a number of school districts as a result of what had been on the news. And they looked over our enrollment process, our forms, in both Power School through our e-collect system and also our paper form reporting. It was recommended that we make an adjustment to the way we collect the data simply to separate that data from registration. So in other words, because we are required by law to provide data about the birthplace being in the United States or not, the question is reframed and it's asked separately in the process. So in other words, instead of attempting to collect all of that demographic information at the same time as registration, which to be honest, we did and most school districts do, because we have the parent registering at the time, we know we need to provide the state with the information, and not providing it isn't an option. So if we have you there registering at the time, we collect as much information for our reporting as possible, instead of relying on you doing it at another time and then missing the deadline, the state. Which typically the PSIS reporting, for example, is October 1st, every year that that data is uploaded. So, that said, the long and the short of it is, the question that was asked, was asked so that we could provide the data to the state not as a condition of registration or enrollment. But to be very clear about that, we are dividing, we've already begun this actually, the process into two parts, so that it couldn't be construed as though that information was necessary for you to be able to enroll. Because there is necessary information to enroll, proving your residency in the town of Avon, for example, that you're a school-aged child, providing records if you're coming from another school and so forth. But whether or not you are a US citizen is not a condition for registration by law.
So I guess the answer, the short answer to my question is, we ask the question because the state requires the data.
Yes.
So the question, did we add the question, or did Power School add it to multiple districts?
There was, no, there was, there's been, and I can forward to you, and we can also put it online, because there's been quite a bit of state guidance around this over the years, insofar as how to ask the question, but also the data that has to be collected. So the answer is, are we required to collect it in some form? Yes. Could we change the way that we asked it and still get the same information? Yes. So at no time were we requiring someone to produce US citizenship, even though the question asked, are you a US citizen? It asked that so that they got the information from the state. We can rephrase that question and say, and the state will utilize the data in the same way we've now been advised. And this is what they're advising districts all over the state. And it's to ask what state you reside in or were born in. You're collecting the same data, you're asking the question differently.
And what if they were not born in?
It's not the same data as you phrase the question.
That's what we have been told to do.
I understand, I'm trying to make it sound the same way.
For the purposes of the state before that. I'm not saying it's exactly the same answer, but for the purposes of what the state wants the data for, to provide to the federal government in part.
Well, like, he was born in Paris, he's a US citizen. Has always been a US citizen, naturalized citizen. So there you go, to that you have different. My concern is, in fact, different, and we'll leave the state, and they can be foolish if they want to be. What do you do with the data once you report?
Nothing.
I want you to purge it. I don't want us to even know the information, so no one can ever accuse us of misusing it. So once you, if you do it yearly, fine, October 1st, report. October 2nd, purge it. If they come to us and say, "We want to audit you," we've purged it, because I don't want anyone to know it. I don't want to know it, I don't want you to know it. I don't want anyone to accuse us of ever misusing this data. I don't want to come in and get served with subpoena by any agency, especially a federal agency, saying, "Please tie us with this question to this person, and we want to know all the people who are not US citizens that are in your school so we can check on immigration status." I do not want to know the answer to that question.
I disagree.
Really?
It is state required that we collect the data. But that's not the only piece of data that, if we go with your standard, there's a whole list of other data that could be used and abused easily. So if we're talking about purging data, then we're going to purge all the data. And that then may be cause problems in terms of our ability to provide instruction, provide services. I think if the state requires us to report it, we can, we keep it. Now, whether we make that available to staff, you know, outside the administrative level, is a different story.
It's available by subpoenas. So it's available by national security letter. And I'm highly concerned about having such data that we think we don't want to go anywhere.
But then commit yourself then to taking that same standard to every other piece of sensitive data and information we have about every student and staff member.
Tell me what they are, and I'd be happy to do it.
Sure, disability is protected, right? That's protected information. I can't identify students to a non-staff member that will fire someone if someone says, "Oh, you know, Johnny in my class has an IAB." That's a breach of their confidentiality. We've talked about discrimination against individuals who've had IEPs and 504s, right? Disabilities, or even cases of staff who may have had a history of drug abuse that we know, there are federal protections against that as well. These things could be used to identify individuals that could be in a situation where the information's abused, can be abused. That's the same argument you're making on citizenship. So either A, we purge all data that could identify either students or staff, or we find some way to safely secure that data. And understand that there are protections in a federal system that would protect us from a federal inquisition or a state inquisition or so forth.
I would say, gentleman speaking, they aren't. Last time I heard, the level encryption we're using was blowfish. It's not two fish or three fish, so I would say it's inadequate. But if you have stuff that's necessary for instruction, don't have a problem with that. But if you have material that we are not supposed to ever be able to use and to discriminate against students on those grounds, I have a concern about having it. Because then someone can get it from us.
Do we collect social security numbers?
Can we, so this is a pretty broad topic all of a sudden, right? So can we get some legal advice or thoughts on this?
We already did, they're what I'm providing right now.
I'm sorry?
We did.
In response to the purging, I don't think we have a response in terms of the purging. Because I don't know if that has implications, that needs to be looked at from a council.
I can get legal advice on that, but I can make it.
And then to Jeff's point as well, to kind of think about that as well. So I don't know if we need to revisit this in broader terms, because I think these are important.
We're not going to be advised to purge the data though. So I mean, if you're asking.
Well, I want to see if we're breaking any sort of regulations or laws if we do that.
But to Houston's concern, I think that without discussion of purging data, I think your concern is protecting our student privacy, right? And their right to an education.
Generally speaking, yes.
Generally speaking, but.
The information we have should be related to our mission. If it is not related to our mission, we shouldn't have it. But agree?
I have heard from many, many community members on this. This was a real point of concern for many people. I respect that, so we did have to add it, we added it this year.
No.
No.
It has, it has been a question. It is not, it was not added by us.
It's not new. It has always existed in Power School.
It has changed in some iterations of how the question was asked, is my understanding. But that data was always collected.
Do we have a way to kind of couch that question? Because I'm anticipating that that would be, there's all kinds of concerns around intimidation and, you know, security, as Houston's talking about. When you're saying you're rewriting it, are you kind of couching it in verbiage that feels protective to whoever's answering that question?
What we have already done to rewrite it, because we were advised to do so after I asked the question, was specifically to change the question, simply ask if the child was born in any state, and then it's yes or no. And that's, that's collected this data.
I don't understand the question.
Was the child born in any state? And then it's defined as the 50 states, the District of Columbia, and the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, yes or no?
Well, then I would back up what Houston's saying. That's a completely different question. I know members on the board who weren't born in any state, but are also American citizens, so.
Right.
We have to clarify that as well.
I have a son adopted from Guatemala who was not born in any state, but is a grateful US citizen, so I.
Which is why I'm saying, we're missing the point right now. So it's the qualifier for the federal grant. The state, Connecticut State Department of Education asks it for federal grant funds. They provide that data to the federal government. Asking the question in this way still gives them the data that they need, whatever that means.
We're perfectly happy with that. But we did not adopt the policy regarding student information regarding citizenship disclosures on the grounds that we don't have that information. Therefore, we don't need to protect the information, because we don't have it. And now you're telling me we do. So I'm telling you, you either have to adopt the policy or you have to get rid of the information after reporting it. I happen to be personally in favor of getting rid of the information after we report it. But, you know, Jeff has some concerns, and that's fine. This is not the moment or the time to reach a conclusion for that. But I'm telling you, it's a problem. Other than Jeff might disagree with me, that's fine.
If we were to purge the data every year, how would we then go about recollecting the data every year to provide it to the state again?
Ask this question as part of your Power School thing. You're asking it now of people.
No, we're asking.
They enter the school district.
We're asking it at the time of, once they've been enrolled, the data is collected. If anything changes, they change the data.
Then, oh, people's places of birth are not normally going to change unless the spot that they're born on changes countries.
But you're asking to purge all of the data, not just that?
But then we can also store it in a summary fashion, which I don't have a problem with and it's not individually identifiable. But if you're going through and Power School is asking Jason where his kids were, I assume it's going to ask him that every year, because your kids aren't duly registered.
Yeah, I don't, it stuck out to me this year, because it's the first time I recall being asked the question as a parent. And I, Houston, right, I registered my kids here when they were in kindergarten.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, part of it is because the way the question had to be asked was changed in the previous data collection, before this guidance came. From what Cindy explained to me.
I mean, I would have to trace that back over to Houston.
I guess the suggestion, because it's such an important issue, and everybody has such strong feelings. What if we look at it in policy committee and kind of start there to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page as far as what we understand the realities are of this kind of thing?
That's fine by me. This is certainly an example to our earlier point, that I would defer the lead on this to the board utilizing the legal counsel to discuss the policy. Because on the one, on the one hand, I have to ensure that we're meeting the state regulations. And on the other hand, we're talking, so we have to find where.
And I appreciate you being so fast to respond to the community's concern and finding, getting guidance on the new wording around that. That seems a little bit less, more accommodating.
So we do have policy around student privacy?
Right. And there's federal law around student privacy. Their records are confidential. That's not speaking to Houston's concern.
It comes all the time.
Right, but there's most definitely a way of discussing this at a policy level to determine whether or not we are currently meeting the needs of students or whether something needs to be revised.
Understood. I will determine when board council is able to attend a policy meeting, and that's when we'll discuss it.
Thank you.
Good news, Jeff, I have a couple more, but not. It's what you say now.
I forgot what it was.
It's what you say now, but let's see if. I promise, I promise, they're not nearly as interesting. One other thing that I was told and observed is, I guess, the foot traffic between West Avon Road and Country Club Road after the middle school and the high school dismisses every day can get a little hairy between the student drivers leaving the high school. I guess there's a lot of middle schoolers who, with some newfound freedom, walk to the library from the middle school. So a question that was posed to me was, has there ever been any thought or consideration to possibly getting a crossing yard at that intersection for, you know, a brief period of time in the afternoon when you know you're going to have foot traffic there? I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know that we ever had a crossing yard in Avon. I don't know if it would be a town job or a board of ed job. But the question is, is that something we could look into at that intersection?
So that, Miles is looking into that already from that conversation. I don't have the, he's gone, no, there he is. We had that, no, there's no answer to it right now. It came up, it was brought to us too, and so we'll see what we can do.
So something we could investigate.
Yep, that's where we are.
This is another personal observation, and there might not be an answer to the question, but with my own kids who play sports and things like that, when I sign them up for sports and I get their schedule, most things they do, I have an option to, just subscribe to a calendar. And I wondered if that was something we ever considered as a district where perhaps parents and guardians could subscribe to the school calendar or subscribe, whether it's the district calendar or the school's event calendar. Because I know, I'm sure every parent in Avon, when school starts, looks at the calendar, has it going out and it's going like this. If there was a way through using technology to subscribe to a calendar, probably would save a lot of grief for everybody. If a time or a date changes for an event, your calendar automatically updates. Just, there's a question, like, could we look into doing something like that?
Okay, yes.
And then my last one. Well, look, it's the beginning of the year, you know, I have, this is just another. This is another, it goes to the buses, and I, Miles spoke to it, and I think that the beginning of the year with the buses is always a challenge. I guess my only kind of comment on that from observing things would be, bus drivers, like anybody else, have a hard job, but I'd like to see them at least. Just use common sense. For instance, a bus that goes by my house, stops in front of my house, backs up into a road in order to do a K-turn, and then leaves my neighborhood. And actually, when it does the K-turn, then it lets my son out to cross the street, as opposed to dropping off on my side of the street. That's neither here nor there. The point being, the point being, if the bus could roll about an eighth of a mile around a loop and come out in the road where it does, backs in to do the K-turn, that to me seems silly and dangerous. I took the liberty of mentioning it to the bus driver. She mentioned she's been driving the bus for a long time, and I wanted her to go around the loop, she would. And I said, "Well, it's not really my job to tell you what route to take, but it just seems dangerous to me." So my comment would be, again, I know it's specialty runs the bus routes, but just kind of reiterate that, look, common sense tells most people, you don't want to do a K-turn with a bus if you can go around an eighth of a mile loop. But there's stories about buses backing into mailboxes and this and that. Just use some common sense, that would be my only point, if we can convey that message. some common sense. That would be my only point if we can convey that message, Miles. Thank you. And that's it.
Nice try.
All right, thank you.
I just had two, can I share two less controversial things than Jason's tenors? I wanted to thank the Nicholas family. I saw that they had made that beautiful donation. What a special thing that they did that. I'm sure Warren Brooke is really appreciative and how exciting. What a nice, when we talk about money all the time, it's nice to have that pop in. And I attended the September eleventh memorial at the firehouse. I wanted to say that the Avon Volunteer Fire Department did a fantastic job. It was a really beautiful ceremony and the Avon High School chorus, I believe, was there.
Camerona?
Was it Camerona? They did a fantastic job, really very moving and beautiful and they were all so poised and it was really meaningful to hear them. So, I just wanted to thank them for doing that.
Thank you. Other board members?
I'm good.
Just look at both ways.
One comment regarding September eleventh that maybe you all don't know. Marty Corrigan was a member of the Board of Ed. His daughter was there and died there and they have a statue of her outside of the library, so it did touch the community directly.
The library here?
Yes.
The public library.
The public library, yeah.
Thank you, Houston. All right. Excellent start to the school year. I guess we are needing a motion to, oh, no, communication from the public, so I apologize. Anyone that has remained here that would like, yes, Lisa, come forward.
You brought up that you'll be on Lisa Semenac.
Thank you.
Avon resident, through the discussion tonight, you brought up that there will be adding a porta potty for the field. I'm just throwing out there and assuming that it's going to be an accessible porta potty.
Yes.
I would assume so.
That's it?
Good question.
Yes, very important. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Thank you for remaining with us this whole time. That was very, it's nice to have you with us. So, now I think we're ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Might Houston just have a second? Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed, extensions? Okay, we adjourn at eight-thirty-two.